On trade creation and market access dialogue, I would request Mr. Tarun Sharma, Deputy Managing Director, Exim Bank, India, Dr. Prabir De, Professor RIS, Mr. Pranav Kumar, Vice President, International Trade Policy and Compliance Reliance Industries Limited, and Dr. Shiladitya Chotrapadhyay, former member, Indian Administrative Service and Asian Development Bank, and Centre for Sustainable Development, Government of Assam. Please take seats in the RIS.
I would request the audience to please settle down. This is the last session of the day, and we have got we now experts on this particular subject, and they are indeed subject matter experts. So it's a half an hour, forty minutes session. Our one, Dr. Naveesh Kumar from ISE, virtually, actually joining us. So if you settle down quickly, we can just start the proceedings of the program. And I would request the moderator of the session, Dr. Shiladitya Chotrapadhyay, take it forward as per his liking. Yeah. I will request my colleagues to help people get seated, please. We will slowly then start the session. Once again, request the audience has to kindly be seated, add their respective informations so that the session can be started. Hello. I see call from my coaches to get them, the audience has seated, so that we can start the session. Shiladitya Chotrapadhyay, you can start.
Okay, I think we can start now. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is, as you can see, the second section in the afternoon. And I must thank all those who have still lingered on in this session. It is, I suppose, due to the galaxy of panelists that we have here, who are actually great experts in the field of trade, and also the very great interest in this topic of trade creation. In fact, when we were designing this, this, this conclave. Yeah. And create a potential, maybe this, to be part of loading, at least in the past. Positive foundation to the task. Create between the country and the staff, twenty-five to twenty-eight. And four hours low, potentially, is trading, we have to do something about. I'll be on a greater. Let me introduce, I know. India, my development, development. Trade expansion for everyone. Here, financial services working through. As the director of India, I am. Dr. Rokhi Jay, Professor, Professor, and also giving the name of the foundation. There is a part of the center. And with the meeting. See also. I do. My wife is. The vice president. I am. Finally, fine. All the time. Right, who is working in I, I. You know, the state of politics. Yeah. And what is frequently with government in India, because the level of. Vice on the. National organization. He holds an empty income. We are given a lot of science that we do, and I, but our everything is presented to me for around seven minutes. And then, from the issue that they have highlighted, we do a little part as well, the question. And then open it up to the. So, we can there. I can see what. Thank you. Uh, I'm. Yeah, Naveesh, I, I'll, I'll request you to. Naveesh, I, I'll ask you. Think also on connectivity in. Maybe that could be one of the same.
So. Can I begin now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Shiloh. I'm very happy to join all of you, even though virtually. I'm sorry, I can't be physically with all of you because some of my very old friends, including yourself, Shiloh and Panav and Prabhi. So I would have very much liked to reconnect with all my old friends. So this theme of trade creation and regional, you know, integration is very interesting. And obviously, you know, deep interest I have in some of these issues. Having worked on them in my time at RIS and then in UNSCAP. I think the context of today makes this theme even more critical because the world is passing through what is sometimes described as retreat of globalization or slow-bization, as economists calls it. Where, you know, we know that world trade was growing at the rate of, say, fifteen to twenty percent on average in the, you know, early years of this century, from two thousand three to two thousand nine, which I call it as a dream run of global economy and globalization or hyper-globalization, if you like. But then after global financial crisis, trade has never recovered from it, actually. And then of late, the geopolitical factors and pandemic have done what, what can be seen as the last proverbial last straw. And the growth rate of world trade, if we get anything positive, we should feel lucky. So zero to two percent is kind of average of these days. And that means a lot of loss of economic opportunities and economic growth. India might be losing, in my estimate, at least one percentage point of economic growth because of retreat of globalization. So, so this is something which is not very, you know, encouraging. And so the global context certainly warrants a focus of attention on trade creation. How can we create new trade opportunities? And also, the other thing which is going around alongside the slow growth of world trade is the rebuilding by global corporations of their value chains and which are also, you know, disrupted by the geopolitical tensions. And, and then there are issues of geopolitics surfacing, even in this restructuring of supply chains. Friend shoring is often mentioned, but there are other trends on the horizon. This rise of artificial intelligence and Industry 4.0, which is also leading to some kind of reshoring back or, you know, onshoring of global production networks. So many such disruptive trends around us and affected, affecting world trade and that requiring a response from countries like, you know, and the Asia region needing to do something to reset the, you know, their integration with the global economy. And in that context, I think regional trade promotion or creation or exploitation, full exploitation of regional trade appears to be a very important option. Especially because, you know, as many studies, we, we have been involved in the past in the UNSCAP and also in RIS, Prabhi will tell you more. You know, the, the potential of intra-regional trade has never been exploited. And between thirty to sixty percent of trade potential remains to be exploited in South Asia, in broader Asia, and everywhere else. Because of the problems or challenges that the connectivity, transport connectivity and trade facilitation face in this region. So even though, you know, we are sitting in a huge connected landmass geographically, but in terms of transport connectivity and, you know, trade facilitation at the borders, we have a lot, long way to go, although some many steps are being taken. You know, in India, for instance, we are seeing a lot of investment going into infrastructure for strengthening, you know, transport links within the country and making it a single market. Dedicated freight corridors are coming up or across the length and breadth of the country, then national highways and all that. And there are many initiatives cross-border like India, Myanmar, Thailand highway, Kaladan multimodal project, BBIN, SASEK transport lines, BRICS connectivity master plan. And all of these initiatives, some of them are moving faster than the others. And but what is most important is that they should not be working at the cross purposes and a coordinated approach is needed so that we get the maximum mileage out of them. But very importantly, you know, a new initiative at this G20 summit, which concluded only a week and a half ago, was taken, which is India, Middle East, Europe Economic Corridor, and signed at the occasion of the G20. I think it has put on the table something very breathtaking and very, very important, which could be a game changer if we are able to exploit it. So for a long time, India tried to strengthen the transport connectivity for it with, you know, the other, other initiatives like INSTC, International North-South Transport Corridor. And then ASCAP had this ITIDKD kind of corridor. None of these, you know, really became successful or exploited their potential because of geopolitics. But now on the table is something which appears to be having, you know, full support of major players in this region. And so IMAC, India, Middle East, Europe Corridor could take off. And while it is very important that it connects India with its major trade partners on the western side, which is Middle East and Europe, which are large, among the largest trading partners of, of India, which is a good thing that we are getting more efficient means of reaching these markets in our major trade partners and which could be, according to estimates, reducing the tangent time and cost by up to forty percent. And so that much of gain on connecting competitiveness side. But I see it in the larger context of Asia, Europe, you know, connectivity, larger play and India sitting at the middle of that. So I, whenever I look at India's map or the global map and India, India appears to me at, to be at the crossroads of Asia and Europe. And with the domestic corridors that are coming up, the dedicated freight corridor and others, national highways, et cetera, you have the opportunity to connect on the, you know, with, between the initiatives on the eastern side of India, which are like IMT or BBIN or BIMSTACK, you know, master plans or corridors, and IMAC on the western side. So India is sitting at the crossroads of Europe and Asia, which could be, I think, if we are able to provide a good framework of trade facilitation and transport facilitation and connect the two vast regions on our sides, our western and eastern, we could be not only promoting our own trade, but also supporting and facilitating broader Asia, Europe and Asia, Middle East trade. I think this is a very real opportunity India is sitting at. And in the coming years, we should be really pushing both sides of these initiatives to exploit their full potential in trade creation because in the context of slow-bization, this is very, very critical step to, you know, build these corridors, which will help in creating more, more trade and help in expediting and accelerating our economic growth. I'll stop here. Thank you, Shiloh.
Thank you, Naveesh. Yeah, you have some of things. Feel that. Come back to that. Now, how can I, Tarun? I need so. Thank you very much, Naveesh. Good afternoon. From the one. Even this, years now, you know, that story of decades ago, things are much better. Dr. Naveesh Kumar is looking for something, good things that are happening in India, for infrastructure, and how the areas. What really happened is how soon now, who, who first, and then, and services, and, you know, there's the whole discussion about global demands. How it's for, the issue really is that you focus primarily on this. Dr. Naveesh Kumar, about the, you know, parts of going to markets, in other places. And that's something that I wanted to talk about. If we really want to grow as a company, to go to the aspects of that, we need to explore that. And the latest, last, uh, topic, I think, about the. I would ask you, that's the program that we are doing, I don't know, in relation to the. The operations also, you can see, how you can live in that. We're taking up. And just to me, thanks. If there is support to a task. In the fight, it is being done, once again, by the fight, what's happening, actually, for the experience. Cover. But it is small, you know, small parts take out. Now, that's what we need to show, to give it a small drop in the, the topic of. But if we keep moving at it and making collectively, it's, you know, a good. We can see that we can contribute to incremental exposure. It can be certain cases, contribution to drive the. There are a couple of exporters, who's still not been able to come back, the great fish shackles, so, so they've actually, they've export numbers are far more than what's ever. So that's, that's a little bit only around the trade, trade, and how we with it, exploring that. The second is, you know, if you look at China, China is slowing down now very significantly. What's also happening is a great deficit is growing. See, even from eighty-nine, who are depending simply, in course, concerning of. Has to, there has been the. I think, who's, who's being that, in some forms, which is from the area is the. But really needs to pass. And, and the third area is to the product. Because that are great part of it, signs of, or, or the total product. But we need to look at, oh, so there's a little bit of, and we look at the, what's passed, it was gradual shift from what it was. For the products that we want to require. But again, another. In terms of, you know, the, the whole thought about, which is great, the stuff here, even the, even the. Something trying to be, to sort of, I don't know. A lot of us have looked at, we should, in fact, in the. Like a landmark, or I just. I think, this is what I think. Basically, the next, again, it's, it's something very, very good. And, you know, I was looking at a study by ADD and it's, and the, Dr. Naveesh Kumar, working out of this. But it says that one's average place for rate for reduction happens to, in case of whole digital trade. That's the much number, matter of the amount that you are cruising because you are not able to use it to a extent. Now, some advances that happen, came in gateways, India's cooperation, in the. So, we have this race, now, when you talk about GI, they are very specific, with the, 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 I, I. Talk about which is the small thing that has, yeah, same with this. Here is being used by the security of work, and then, then to try, where the, the, the. You have to secure, he didn't want to have to vote on that. It's predictive analysis, uh, which I mean, yeah, it can also help in the wear out, in, 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 going to use K by Z. And it's, that's one, the songs is completely one track. Something to battle thousands of. You see how you can look at. No, we're, we're looking from, from, from. Right from this, right, finding these songs. Of, in the, the. Spouting that a free, only, they, okay. And finally, totally. Entirely. That's, that's, each. Products. Okay, there's so much talk, and I won't, I won't talk about it too much, but. It's, it's. If it's for, please, we know, wait, and it's one of the. There are, there are, I don't know, but I won't, I won't take it to that for the, I take the. Thank you very much.
The previous beginning of the session, you know, there was the thing, Director General, BCCI, he said that trade creation and trade diversion. If, if we look at a larger, you know, the region, I, I won't say the block, it's yet to be trade block, Indo-Pacific. How we look at it, if I may, on the trade creation or trade diversion, particularly from the point of view of India. India is very much a participating, you know, country in, in Indo-Pacific. It's not yet a member because Indo-Pacific, as you know, is an US strategy. And if you look at it in India, they don't like the word strategy. We call it initiative, Indian initiative. Strategy is a kind of a very sensitive word. And on Indo-Pacific, still heavily contested about the definition, about the partnerships. And today it is kind of a loose, loose type of, of course, you know, in, in time to come, it will evolve, you know, eventually elevate to, and, you know, some better concrete block. But let's see, you know, how, you know, what's, if I may speak to be a little nationalist from the point of view of India. Is it Indo-Pacific? How is going to help particularly the launch of this, in the Chambers network in, in Indo-Pacific by BCCI? When it comes to Indo-Pacific, what is the central position?
As we are. Have to, that, last year, you're looking for. They take it.
Energy Cooperation. In G20 sideline, that is there was another project launch, global biofuel alliance. India has already international solar alliance operating from Delhi. Many other participating countries, they have their own initiatives. So I think in the energy areas, particular renewable energy, solar energy is a part of renewable as well. You know, many things because this is a common challenge and in view of our climate agreement commitments, you know, net fifty or net seventy. I think every member countries, participating countries of Indo-Pacific, this is, you know, the kind of a mandate they have to fulfill before, you know, before, for their commitment in the Paris Climate Deal. So these are my four, you know, recommendations for the discussion. To conclude, Mr. Chair, that today's discussion is a very, very noble initiative. I don't see very much happening in Delhi, this kind of. I congratulate all the participants coming here and meeting and doing the great things. And this is the starting form, this is what Dato said, this two hundred and sixty years old building. And we are creating a new initiative from here. And thank you very much, Sir Chair.
Thank you very much, Praveer. You've raised a number of issues which maybe later on we can further discuss. And can you focus on the sustainability aspect?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Yeah, that is fine. So first of all, I would like to thank Bengal Chamber of Commerce for inviting me and of course giving opportunity to share my own perspective as well as the perspective from my own group on this very important subject, the Indo-Pacific related issues. And I must say that is, this is the most opportune time this discussion is happening when the Indo-Pacific Economic Framework for Prosperity Negotiation is almost coming to an end. It's another few weeks of time in November, we'll see the closure of the negotiation. And then we will move forward towards ratification and implementation and all. So what, since I am very much closely involved with that process, I am keenly following and working closely with the, our negotiating department of commerce. So the missing link was of course the greater participation of private sector. I am sure that the kind of discussion we have witnessed this morning, today, that will help government of India to get more informed inputs from the industry. So that's really very, in fact, I go back to Delhi, I'll just give that feedback to our negotiating department of commerce that this is what's happening in Kolkata and he must get in touch with Bengal Chamber of Commerce to get more feedback on this process. So as you are aware, that one out of four pillar, one pillar has already been negotiated, that is supply chain pillar. And new energy pillar, of course, that is extremely important, that is clean energy part. And fair economy, India is not a part of trade leader, that of, since morning we have discussed, that has been expected. So I would not like to elaborate much on that. But more importantly, as Tarun has mentioned, that as India, we have set an aspirational target of one trillion dollar of merchandise export, one trillion dollar of service export by 2030. And over and above, recently our Prime Minister mentioned that within next five years, we would like to become the third largest economy of the world. And by 2047, we want to become a developed nation. So all these are very ambitious target and how to achieve that. So, so in that context, I would say that the Indo-Pacific development which has unfolded in last few years, that is very timely, I would say. Because if you see the, if you see the India's trade growth particularly in last decade, it was almost, it was almost flat, one to two percent rate of growth, we are between 2013 and 2020. And after that, of course, there is a big jump. In twenty-one, twenty-two, there is a forty percent growth, last year, of course, six percent. So the challenge for us, that of course, we have crossed the historical milestone of four hundred billion dollar of merchandise export, three hundred fifty, almost touching the three hundred fifty billion of service exports. How to sustain that? You can achieve one-time growth, very high, that we did in twenty-one, twenty-two. But after that, from forty percent, it came down to six percent. And this year again, we are facing lot of challenges at least sustaining that growth. So that is extremely critical. So if we have to sustain that growth, then our economic relation business link with the Indo-Pacific nation is very important, very critical. Because already we have a very strong trade investment relationship with European Union. USA happens to be our major export destination. But this part, of course, we have been trying to set our, we are trying to deepen our linkages. Since early nineties, when we started Lucas policy, then now it is Actis, we very extensively negotiated ourse, finally we had to withdraw from that. And of course, after Covid pandemic, the situation has changed. We also changed our own strategy in terms of trying to figure out how we can turn crisis into opportunity. And we did that. That is why we are today the, one of the fastest growing economies and we have recovered very fast, unlike other countries of the world post-Covid. So, so keeping all that in mind, so what is happening Indo-Pacific is very important. But of course, being a part of this grouping is one. But how to leverage that, that is a job of the private sector. So that is, that is we have to keep in mind. So Chairman, you mentioned about sustainability issues. And Praveer also and Dr. Nagesh Kumar also mentioned about the connectivity. Of course, that is extremely important. And when we talk about this Indo-Pacific region, because we discuss about, very passionately, we discuss about the history behind Indo-Pacific, the geographical spread, that is hugely challenging area because the spread of Indo-Pacific starts from New Zealand to USA. So it cuts across three continents. So of course, it's a maritime challenge. And so on the connectivity front, there is a huge challenge. How to address that? Of course, we are trying to address that but as a group. And here I would like to bring the, all the discussion which has happened in the G20 also, because particularly in the finance track part. And you all must be aware that India has taken a deal to reform the multilateral development banks. And we know that multilateral development banks like World Bank or Asian Development and all, they have a mandate to fund the infrastructure. And when, when we talk about connectivity, it's largely infrastructure financing. So if through G20, if we make a progress on reforming the multilateral development banks, we are successful in recapitalizing the multilateral development banks, then we will have more funds available for the investment in connectivity. And because it's maritime connectivity, land connectivity, air connectivity, and now the fourth one, digital connectivity, so that requires a huge investment. So of course, private sector also has to play a role and private sector has been playing. But of course, multilateral agencies, because it's across the, it is cross-border, so multilateral agencies also have to come to the rescue. Second, of course, Praveer also mentioned about energy. So I have just tried to club the two, energy and sustainability. And because this is important to many countries and of course, we have set our own target of achieving the net zero by 2070. And for instance, the other countries who have set by 2050, even my own group Reliance, we have set to achieve the net zero target by 2035. So we have set a very ambitious target. So to meet that ambitious target, of course, we have to translate to the new energy space, whether it's a solar, wind, hydrogen, electrical vehicles and all. So all these are extremely important and one of the major factors, this morning, of course, Mr. Nandwani spoke about the cooperation between India and Australia on critical minerals. Because that is important, whether you talk about solar energy, whether you talk of wind energy, EVs for, batteries for EVs or hydrogen and all. So critical mineral is very important. So under energy pillar, in this Indo-Pacific Economic Forum, we are discussing about how we can cooperate on the seamless supply of the critical minerals. In fact, within the energy pillar also, there are proposals to form alliance on hydrogen. There are proposal to form how we can form alliance on recycled carbon fuel. That is a Japanese proposal. Because during the refining process and also the carbon which you emit, that can be recaptured and again, reprocessed again. So all those ideas, all those proposals are being discussed as a part of new clean energy pillar of Indo-Pacific Economic Forum, we are part of that, we are discussing that. Related to that, one extremely important aspect also, which again, not happening in IPIA, but of course outside IPIA, that is on the plastic, how to curb the plastic pollution. And that is again, how, because it's not only curbing the plastic pollution, but how we can reduce the plastic pollution in the context of the marine pollution. Because every year, tons of plastics are dumped into the ocean. So that is again, important area for us to address under Indo-Pacific because it's a whole maritime. And the discussion negotiations have already started and the UNIP, that's even sponsored. Within the G20 also, we have endorsed that proposal of United Nations. The third, the third intergovernmental negotiating committee is going to meet in Kenya in November to kickstart the discussion on the plastic pollution. The zero draft has already been issued. So there again, so, and why I'm saying the plastic, because plastic is very important for manufacturing also. And we are on the course to revive our manufacturing. Because whether it's electronics, whether it is automobile, medical equipment, everywhere you see the use of plastics. Because with plastic, you are able to lightweight the products. So any stringent provisions on this plastic treaty, that would, that may backfire on our revival of the manufacturing. Because, so that's why we are all for recycling of plastics. So we are talking about circular plastic economy. In fact, at Reliance, we have, we have been able to recycle lot of our, because we are at the top of the plastic value chain. Because we are the supplier of feedstock for plastic manufacturer. So we are investing a lot in terms of how we can try to develop a circular plastic economy. So that is another area where we can discuss and IPIF about the circular plastic economy, we can try to have more cooperation. My last point on the value chain, global value chain. And now I come back to the aspirational target we have set of one trillion dollar of goods, one trillion dollar of services and all. Because what is important that, of course, still though we have lost the four hundred billion, but what we are exporting is largely labor-intensive products. And the petroleum, which has been the major contributor over the last few years, one decade or so. And if you look at the last year export figure also, we could manage a six percent growth largely because of petroleum and little bit from the electronics. Rest all sectors either stagnant or negative growth rate. So if we have to sustain a very high export growth, so we have to be part of global value chain. We have to graduate from the labor-intensive to more high-value, more tech-intensive products. Of course, this is happening because we have now become the, one of the largest exporter of mobile phone. We have revived electronics industry, we are exporting also. But of course, we have a long way to go. Automobile, for instance, we have to see how we can export more passenger cars. India is a large market, we are producing all the major producer, but we are not a major exporters of passenger cars. Similarly, in the auto component also, how we can become the, how we can become the global supplier? Because if as a auto component manufacturer, we are supplying parts for the Honda in, for Indian manufacturing, how we can supply parts for the Honda which manufacture in Japan, Korea or Europe? So for auto component sector also, it is important how we can become the global supplier of the lead firm. So, so we have to see how we get integrated in GVCs, what are the issues we have to address? Whether it's a trade policy, whether it's a standard, whether ease of doing business, trade facilitation, IPR issues, all those are very important we have to address. And of course, the process started, so let's see, we will have more positive results in coming days. Thank you.
Thank you, Pranav. So I think we got a large number of very, very interesting ideas on a large number of different, you know, aspects of trade. It's too hard for me to go into all of these. But in order to generate some kind of discussion from these experts, I was noting down a couple of points. I thought I was speaking on the mic, but it's okay. Is it, is it now? Am I audible? Okay. So I, I'll raise a couple of issues and maybe I'll ask panelists, you know, in no order, but whoever can come in to talk about it. Now, you mentioned about aspiration to achieve a three trillion economy, a five trillion economy.
Two trillion and.
Oh yeah, yeah, and to be the third largest economy in the world and so on, so forth. But while it is largest in terms of overall GDP, it is amongst the poorest in terms of per capita income. That reality has to strike us and that's very important. We keep talking about third place in the world, but we are hundred and forty-fourth place in per capita GDP. Now, how can trade help in inclusion? This is something we don't really talk much about, okay? Trade has to play a big role in inclusion, which means, and some of you have, have already dealt with the subject, you have, for example, dealt with SMEs, right? How can we expand the growth of MSMEs in a bigger way? This is the thought to take, if you can react to it, it will be very nice. We have a lot of handicrafts being produced, for example, Assam, the state where I worked in. Handicrafts, handlooms, the maximum amount, about eighty percent of handlooms in the country is produced in Assam. And I was speaking to the trade representative from Korea today and he was going to Assam. I said, look at imports of handlooms from Assam. So inclusivity, you trying to promote, you know, the products of the poorer segments of people, maybe something that we should also think about. Now sustainability, I think you mentioned, you spoke a lot about sustainability. But is there really awareness about sustainability? Unless we have awareness about the importance of sustainability. Now, come back to this topic, SDGs. India is not doing well at all on the Sustainable Development Goals. All right, again, while we are going into, you know, third place in the world in terms of overall GDP, our, our actual sort of progress towards the SDGs is quite miserable. So that requires awareness. Actually, are we aware? Now, we are, for example, importing a huge amount for the pujas, coming pujas, we are importing a huge amount of marine products, fish. But do you know that our, in Bengal, we have already depleted our stocks of ilsa, overfishing? This is going on. So this awareness of sustainability has to be there and this has to really genuinely come into focus in our dialogue and discussions when we talk of imports and exports and trade in, maybe you can talk about that. Now, connectivity, this is very important. And you mentioned about, Pranav, about ADB and World Bank and all that providing resources. But problem is, infrastructure is good and we are doing a lot of domestic infrastructure. But as soon as we talk about cross-country infrastructure, the risks of that is far more. And therefore, countries would be far less interested in going in for cross-country infrastructure. Now, Nagesh spoke about this very ambitious, you know, Indo-Arab, European corridor, whatever. Now, is that feasible? There's tremendous amount of connectivity issues associated with that. You'll have to set up railway lines across, you know, much of Middle East and so on, so forth. The huge amount of expenditure involved, where are you going to get the finance from? So this is something which you may try to reflect on. The final kind of point, we don't have too much time, maybe you might, some of you might want to talk about is, what is the role of chambers of commerce? This is a theme, as a matter of fact, the whole day. How can the chambers of commerce, you know, help overall in this process, particularly BCCI? I think I'll, I'll leave you with these thoughts and in the remaining time, maybe you can, who will like to go first? Nagesh, are you there with us? Maybe he's not, so.
Okay, you want me?
Okay, Praveer? Oh, yeah, that, Tarun, why you start?
So I'll, I'll just maybe pick up on a couple of those thoughts. One is on the sustainability part, you know. So if you look at plastics or recyclability, in India, it's largely in the informal sector. Of course, there are certain very large companies that are doing social good, but otherwise largely informal sector. So what we are looking to support is, how do you catch innovation at the grassroots level? So there's a small company that we have now supported through a structured mix of debt equity and technical assistance. It's called Banin Nation. What they do is they collect plastic waste from across the nation and they do it through an app-based tool. So they'll go to, let's say, you know, Hubli or they'll go to Banaras and they'll pick up that waste and they've gotten a patented technology to process the waste in such a way that they create near virgin quality plastic, which is then being used by the likes of Procter &amp; Gamble and Unilever to, in their cosmetic range or shampoo bottles. Now typically, these MNCs say that I will not use anything but virgin quality because it changes the chemical composition of my product. But this near virgin quality plastic pellet is now being used, that's a huge win. If, if we are able to help this company scale up and we've started the support for them, I think over the next three years, we can make a radical difference. Because so far, what is happening is, let's say till about five years ago, we were helping companies make T-shirts out of plastic bottles or pet bottles and several other products. But now being used again in the same industry is a huge game changer. That's one thought I wanted to leave with you all. The second is in terms of how do we help inclusivity in our growth formulation? And the point that Dr. Chatterjee mentioned is very, very true in terms of, you know, GDP per capita still being a concern for us. Now, and, and you know, the jury is out there in terms of the number of percentage of MSMEs that contribute to exports, about forty-eight to fifty percent. It's a huge number. Again, largely a lot of them are in the informal sector, they're not getting enough, you know, for the hard work that they do. So we've started a program where we identify such MSMEs that are not able to scale up, grow, they've stagnated or they have a differentiated technology product or process. Now, I'll tell you this very small company. Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll be very quick here. This is very small company that got an order from the Indian army after seven rounds of validation. But they did not have any ability to get a funded or a non-funded facility from a bank or an NBFC or an investor. And they were about to lose the order. We provided them that facility, they executed the one thirty crore order. Today, they have come out, three years hence, they come out with an IPO which was hundred and eight times oversubscribed. They don't need us anymore. So that's the value that we need to come collectively and try and contribute to the better good of MSMEs and make it more inclusive. I'll pause here, I think time is very short, thank you.
Just quickly, on inclusivity, basically, in the G20 discussion, so we have used inclusivity in all aspect. But one important is the inclusivity in GVCs. And where we talk about MSMEs particularly, because MSMEs by and large, they are the producer of intermediate products. So if they are the, if we are able to connect those MSMEs companies to the large lead firm, lead firm maybe producing India, maybe in Germany, maybe in Tokyo, wherever. So that would help our MSMEs to get a high price for their product. But this is easier said than done because lead firm will come with their own prescription, what kind of standards they want, what kind of quality they want. So they also, so that government and of course, the chambers also can help MSMEs to comply with. Second, on the sustainability, sustainability agenda is expanding. It's not only about environmental compliance. Whole lot of social issues are also being brought under the canvas of sustainability, whether it's labor standard, whether human rights, whether gender, all those. And we are negotiating the Free Trade Agreement with European Union and we are just facing all those issues. So that industry has to keep in mind. Secondly, you are also aware about the many legislations you have brought in. Of course, SIBM you are aware, that is purely environmental compliance. But there is another corporate sustainability due diligence, where you have to ensure that your supply chain is sustainable, which talks about labor rights, which talks about gender, which talks about human rights and all. And financing infrastructure, I mentioned about the MDD, but of course, under finance track of G20, lot of discussion has happened. Because India has not champion of infrafinancing since the days of our previous government when Montesing Alawalia was the G20 supervisor.
All right. Okay, just thirty seconds.
Okay, so Dr. Chatterjee mentioned about handlooms in Assam. I just, I was, you know, thinking of making this small point that we help companies in, you know, entering new market. So we help this small bamboo producer get orders from the Commonwealth Council. And as soon as it reached there, it was airlifted, it reached there and they opened the product, it was, it had fungus on it. And we were, you know, very surprised what went wrong. See, we brought in an expert. They said what's happening is, the self-help group is not drying the bamboo properly, so there's a humid, there's a moisture in it. Now, these small interventions sometimes go a long way and that's, I just wanted to share the story, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, we don't have too much time, so we'll have to end here. I can't, unless you can do it in two seconds, okay? Whatever question you have, yeah.
No, it'll take ten seconds. And just, this is because Mr. Sharma is here and I thought I would sort of put an input. You know, one of our strengths in India is engineering goods, right? But engineering and infrastructure, but we, really our exports are pretty low. While we are quality-wise and price-wise, we are very competitive. And since I work in that area and one of the things which I do is also financing, financial closures for projects. So, and to be honest, I have not done in Vietnam, any financial closure with Indian exam. However, I've done with European exams and Koreans and Japanese for two reasons and that's what I want to tell you.
Can you, can you finish your?
Yeah. So one is, your coupon rates are not competitive. And secondly, the more, mostly important is the process takes too much of a long time. And if we can crack that, then our engineering exports will really grow lips and bobs.
So we've got a regional head and a credit vertical head sitting right here, I'll make that introduction for you. Okay, thank you very much. That brings this to a close. After this, there is the press conference, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just before the press conference, we have a pleasant task to perform. Would like to hand over tokens of our appreciation to the esteemed panelists. So Sirajit sir, if you can please do the honors. I would request my colleagues to please help first to, I mean, I am not going by the sequence, the names are engraved, so, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Pranav Kumar first. I know his team has gone out end of day, but then we can clap. Tarun Sharma, happy to meet you, thank you so much, sir. Vice President, Leadership Policy and Compliance Governance Industry, Dr. Chatterjee. Both of them have come, joined us from Mumbai, here, and Dr. Piyavi here. Professor Farah Yes, Dr. Dale Stravid from, in fact, Professor Chatterjee. Sir, if I can request you for taking a moment to, to serve. Yeah, I virtually serve, so, so, so.
Please send him something by courier, yeah, yeah, thank you. In fact, Dr. Sirajit Chhotobadhai, Dr. Prabir De, Professor Dr. Ojitabor Ayachodiri, they are the main pillars of the Economic Affairs Committee, which has driven this program that you see today. So can we have a good round of applause for them also? Thank you so much. I request friends from the media to kindly gather for the press conference. Our leadership team will be joining in a minute.